Michelle, I sit there today and I go, "You remember where I was one year ago? My kid was in Kabul, Afghanistan."
She just took him on.
Yep. That's where I was a year ago at this time.
They're like little, they're so fine. They're so fine. Bruce cheated that?
Shannon.
See, the thing about that is Danielle said, "Oh, no, it's okay."
She's like a girl like that. She got him at the golf.
Yeah.
She's like the one.
Yeah.
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 Yes.
I know, it's like, who's the person that gives them?
My phone.
Oh, you're good.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone's coming.
So Shannon, I run full drag.
It's still hurts, sorting through it.
No, that would be one thing. That one's the worst thing.
Yeah.
It will be a school.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Not that many people speak.
Don't text me.
I'm like texting, but I'm not.
I know.
I'm like, "Okay."
I have free to see all 100.
She's like a girl like that.
She got him at the golf.
Yes.
It's a totally true.
I know, it's like, who's the person that gives them?
No, try.
My phone.
Oh, you're good.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone's coming.
So Shannon, I run full drag.
It's still hurts, sorting through it.
No, that would be one thing.
That one's the worst thing.
Yeah.
It will be a school.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Not that many people speak.
Don't text me.
I'm like texting, but I'm not.
I know.
I'm like, "Okay."
Yeah.
I lost speech.
It's kind of weird.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Not that many people speak.
Don't text me.
I know.
I'm like, "Okay."
I'm like, "I can't."
I know.
I'm like, "Okay."
I know.
I had the one.
And actually, I have actually.
Yeah.
I lost speech.
It's kind of weird.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But you're like, "Oh, okay."
My problem's here.
Oh, okay.
So you don't turn it off until it's like, it's like.
Oh, okay.
And I'm like, "Then he showed me a change with the mail app."
I'm like, "Great, yeah."
The back of my phone.
How about the surgery?
Okay.
And then it was fine.
They were good.
Okay.
What's your least?
Oh, okay.
So you don't turn it off until it's like, it's like.
Oh, okay.
And I'm like, "Then he showed me a change with the mail app."[120.87][120.87][S121.87]
Lots of programs that you can name off that if our network is compromised, learning stops. We don't want to get that phone call that I really can't do this, I can't teach my class because these resources are no longer available. We don't want that to happen. Go ahead. Digital records, not all attacks are about stealing our data. Sometimes they just go in and change it, they alter it to whatever fits whatever they're trying to do. We have a plan, as I said now, I had sat down with Chris and Michelle on December 20th of last year. So, we can say we have a plan, the job now is going to be to work with staff, work with those that are part of certain areas of the plan for training and implementation so that that incident response plan is as comfortable to us as a fire drill or a lockdown drill. We'll do cyber incident response drills just to make sure we've sharpened that to where we're ready to go. Practice makes perfect, and with that, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on my favorite topic? Matt?
We should also probably thank Pete Royer from LCTN. He provided a lot of input to Chris, myself, and Jeff as we were working on all of this data. So that was helpful as he worked with other area IT directors.
I actually got to work with LCTN and a core group of IT directors and coordinators that we kind of came up with a cookie cutter approach to a cyber incident response plan and our thought there, and it has been now with the LCTN and Mervid schools that they can take what we came up with, insert their school district name, and often go with it. Thanks.
It was really a good process just because of the fact that it's something that you kind of don't think about. We've got lots of crisis information, lots of crisis plans in place, but now we're starting to talk a little bit about what happens if your communication system goes down? What happens if your student information system goes down, those types of things? And this allows us to have a plan in place. It was kind of funny that, you know, if there was something that would go down, we kind of said, how would you call off school? You know, because parents now are used to that phone call, used to that text message or the email. And, you know, you kind of would go back to the good old fashioned, go get in front of the TV and see if GSL was going to be scrolling across the bottom type of thing. So, a lot of work done by Jeff, so thank you for that, and this is a good thing.
Thank you for being here tonight, Jeff.
Thank you.
Administrators and committee reports, business manager Sandra.
Yeah, just a few comments I want to make on some things we're working on. Facility-wise, projects for this coming year, this coming summer. We have to start kind of finalizing what direction we want to go with certain projects. So I'm still waiting for a few prices quotes to come in on that, and then we'll be meeting with the facility committee to kind of reprioritize things that we're going to do, things that we want to tackle and take on. We're finding a number of things, as in our world today, the prices have gone up on everything. So I'm afraid we're not going to be able to do as many projects as we've been able to do in the past, and we're going to have to tackle and prioritize what we want to take on first. If you notice the old greenhouse, if you drive by there during the day, it's not looking its best other than some of it's hidden behind the snowbanks. But we had quite a bit of damage to that from the snowstorm right before Christmas, or kind of during Christmas there. So I had a lot of broken glass that is now fixed with cardboard and duct tape, and not much else we can do except cardboard and duct tape for quite a while. So I have put in an insurance claim on that because we have such a high deductible, I'm not sure where that's all going to come out. I sent some additional pictures today, so I'll continue to work with them, and then we'll have to kind of decide what direction we want to go. It is in the plan to get that glass repaired, replaced when we do the full greenhouse project. I had kind of tied that all in together, so we'll see where that goes, if we're going to have to do something with that old greenhouse before that. We do have pipes that go through there, so we can't risk letting those freeze as well, so we will keep an eye on that. Still moving forward on the new greenhouse project. Going to start working with an engineer to get the plan drawn up as far as the excavation, plumbing, and electrical. So stay tuned on that. And then the next couple of weeks, we'll also be setting up a finance committee, or I will with Chris and the board members on that committee, and start looking closer and a little harder at next year's budget and this year's revised budget. A few things we're going to have to address yet in this year's revised budget, one of them being snow removal. So as with everybody, the snow removal costs are really going to skyrocket and take a big hunk out of our budget and more than I had originally anticipated. Our December bill, not counting the Silver Lake campus, came in at just about $24,000 compared to last year's December bill was just under $13,000, so almost double. So, and now we've got January storm, and a lot of January left. So we'll see where that takes us, that's one of those things that we just have to monitor in the budget, and there's not much we can do except get the snow taken care of and moved. So that's what I've been working on. So any questions for me right now? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Superintendent Sanju? Oh, whoops, I skipped the principals, sorry. Principal Butler, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Alicia, and good evening. I'll highlight some of the items on your printed report. Our extended day programs at Lincoln and Lakeside are starting this week. We've got Lincoln learners at K through 2, we're focusing on second graders this trimester, and you can see some of what our focus will be. Panthers After School actually started today up at Lakeside, and they've got some really interesting, unique enrichment activities there that you can see. Theater improv, circuits, and electricity. Our theme at Lincoln this month is fairness for our pillars of character. And then at the very bottom, I did learn over the break that our Minnesota Reading Corps tutor did resign, so we are actively recruiting a person to fill that position. I'll go to the back. Again, you know, I like to keep the title budget up there. I did want to point out that we did transfer our Title IV money, which is really used for enrichment. I'll give you an example, we bought some breathing balls for our school psychs and counselors a few years ago with that. We decided the best use of that this year was that so we could keep our bilingual interpreter employee up at Lakeside. So that's why we transferred that Title IV money into Title III. And then we're starting the process, beginning the plan, extended school year for special education for this summer. You can look at all those items for school community partnership. I do want to give special recognition to Andrea Wigger and the Art Club. We've got 19 students signed up, and that started today as well. And then thank you to Linda Matoszek, who organized an author visit in February. She worked on that this summer. And the two authors are local Rhonda Berkeley and Luke Wallford. Rhonda has a character, Wolfie the Wolf, and Luke has a character, Ollie the Ostrich. So we're looking forward to that, and it'll be a great experience for the kids. What questions do you have? Okay, thank you.
Principal Fass?
Good evening. First, I want to start talking about the PBIS incentive trip to Powder Ridge that we have scheduled for this week. This Wednesday, our 7th through 9th grade students who have chosen will be able to go to Powder Ridge to ski or snowboard, whichever they've chosen. And then the following day, Thursday the 12th, will be for our 10th through 12th grade students. This has been a lot of work, and I want to give a special thanks to Sarah Beckman, has really kind of taken the lead on this and worked with staff and worked with our students to make this a possibility for everybody that wanted to attend. Would like to also say thanks to just our staff in general for being flexible with this. I think they've had a lot of opportunities to be not so happy with me of causing a disruption to their day and to their plan. And I think staff understand it, and staff get that we need to do things like this as well for our students just to kind of say, thanks for being you, and thanks for the work that you do for us here every day, and thanks for the behaviors that we've seen here at school this year because they have been tremendously better than they were last year. So I'm excited for that this week. Last thing I would like to say thanks for our staff for as well is I understand that in our community, not everybody can afford a trip like this. And obviously, there's a cost for transportation, and there's a cost for the meal, and there's a cost for the lift ticket and the equipment. We did not turn anybody down that couldn't afford the trip. And it was made possible through our staff stepping up and wanting to sponsor students. And that's something that I had said through the emails that had gone home to parents of, hey, if you need a sponsorship for this, let me know, I'll work with the district and they'll see what I can figure out. And we have a lot of parents on staff, but we also have a lot of staff that visit with their peers. And I had a number of staff come to me and say, if we have individuals that are needing a scholarship, I would like to sponsor one of them. And I would like to make sure that a kid that wants to ski or wants to snowboard that hasn't had that opportunity has the ability to do that. And I think it's important that you, as a board and our public, know that our staff does that too. That they understand the importance of education, but they also understand the importance of experiences for our students in this community. For the students who are choosing not to attend the trip, they are expected to be at school as regular. We'll be having enrichment activities and workdays for them as well, and we're going to try and hold it as normal as a school day as we can. With that being said, we obviously need chaperones on the ski trip. So when our 7th through 9th goes, we have about half of our staff that will be skiing, half of our staff that will be here, and then the same on Thursday the 12th. Moving on from our incentive trip is, it's crazy to think, but we are starting our registration process for the 23-24 school year. We really kind of kicked that off tonight. We had a course fair in our commons for our parents to attend, and it was for the parents of our 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th grade students. And the reason it was for the parents of those specific grades is because those are the individuals that are going to be registering for courses for next year. The idea of a course fair came from our parent advisory group from earlier this fall of just wanting to be more informed of what are the opportunities our kids can register for at GSL? Are the students truly aware of what those opportunities are? Are the parents truly aware of what those opportunities are? And again, staff were phenomenal. I sent this out to them probably a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, saying, hey, I really want to do this. January 9th is our next progress day. I would like to do it, you know, 3:30 to 5:30, each department represented. And I think we had about 20 families that attended tonight. And some people may hear that number and say, well, 20, that wasn't a very good success. I saw the number 20 and was very pleased with that. And I think staff were excited to be able to talk about the opportunities that they have in their department. I think families and parents were excited to talk to staff about, hey, what can my child register for? The next opportunity as far as the course fair will be for our students. All 8th through 11th grade students will have the opportunity to go through that same course fair during their RAP class the week of January 16th, so next week. And we're going to do it, each grade will have a day. So like on Tuesday, our 11th grade will go down to the commons for the course fair. On Wednesday, our 10th grade will go down. And it allows them to talk to our teachers about, hey, I really like you as a teacher, I've built a connection with you, or hey, I really like the subject, what are some more things that I can take? And I think it'll allow for them to register for more, more of a rounded, more targeted schedule for what they are looking for. Once they have gone through the course fair, they will be registering. And as they register, another thing that had come from our parent advisory group was, parents want to know what their child registered for. We've tried this a couple different ways in the past, and it just didn't work out the best. So what we're going to try this year is, we have a Google form that we provided at the junior high, senior high office level. We're going to share this with all of our students that are registering. Students fill out their four-year plan. When it's completed, as how they're going to register, they share it with their RAP advisor, they share it with their counselor, and they share it with their parent. So if a parent wants to see, wants to be informed with what they're going to register with, that parent can open up that Google form and see exactly what their child has registered for for the next year and the track that they're on for the next three years if they'd be a freshman until graduation. I'm not going to tell you that this is going to be seamless, but I'm going to tell you that we're trying. And we will fix the hiccups that come with it. But right now, I'm pretty excited that the course fair went off, and I'm pretty excited that our registration process is starting, and I think we have a pretty good plan of providing more information for our families and parents than we had in the past. Next week is also our Winter Fest week, which is a lot of fun for our students. Our Student Council plans that week. Something that's a little bit different this year is our Student Council and NHS have worked together, and they're planning a dance for Saturday the 21st from 7:00 to 10:00. And I am excited for it. I don't think I'm as excited for it as my daughter is, but we will all be there together, dancing on Saturday the 21st. And if anybody would like to chaperone that dance, I have asked them only to come one at a time, so there's not a mad rush. You can certainly talk to me, and we'll help you find a slot to chaperone that as well. My daughter also told me no, and I told her she didn't have the option.
Is that 7 through 12, or is that 9 through 12?
The dance is 9:12, but Winter Fest is 7:12. So the activities that we'll be doing throughout the week, with the exception of the dance on Saturday, is a 7:12 school.
Okay.
ACT planning, which again is crazy to talk about, that we're here already. ACT, the GSL school testing date is April 4th, so I can say that to the board right now, that's when it will be. Information is going to be sent out to juniors and their parents here in probably the next two weeks. Truly, I'm just trying to get through our Powder Ridge trip, then I'm trying to get through our registration process, and then that information will come out. I'm hopeful that we can still work what we've done every year that I've been here in the past with our Plato ed mentum system. And if students earn so many percent on it, they earn a free test, but that's something that I need to talk about first. Our ACT scores have historically been higher than state average. And even with the dip that came from COVID, our ACT scores have still been high. And I attribute a lot of that to the practice sessions that they get on our ed mentum courseware prior to taking the test. Lastly, with school improvement, we still do have our Panthers After Dark program from 6:00 to 8:00 PM every Tuesday and Thursday, and our Enrich Challenge and Learn program every Monday through Thursday from 3:30 to 4:30. Both of those programs are in our high school media center. Lastly, two more things I'd like to draw your attention to. Our Check and Connect mentorship program, I spoke about it in December and said that we're targeting 16 students. We have gotten approval from all 16 parents, so we have 16 mentors set up with 16 mentees, and that is going here at the high school level. I'm hoping that this program just grows, and we can get it to about 30 by next year. But so far, this has been a very positive start to the mentorship program at the junior high, senior high level. And then lastly, I know I talked a lot about our parent advisory group and where some of these ideas had come from. Our parent advisory was supposed to meet for the second time last Wednesday, but due to the snow day, it was postponed. We are going to be rescheduling that for next Wednesday, the 18th. So if there's any parents at the junior high, senior high level that are interested in attending, information will be sent out here probably tomorrow. What questions do you have for me?
Matt, on the registration process, you talked about having the parents having the opportunity to see what the kids are signing up for. Is this something that, I mean, how do the parents know that they're supposed to be able to do this? Are you sending an email to them, or?
Yep, as our registration process starts, I'll send information out, say, hey, we had our parent course fair tonight. Students will go through the course fair next week. Then emails will come from me to our 8th through 11th grade students saying, talk to your child. What did they see at that course fair? What are the interests they have? And then, oh, by the way, make sure you're checking your email because you'll be receiving one from your child about the courses they're going to be registering here in the next week.
Okay. One other little question is, the ski trip, do you have quite a few kids that are going? I mean, what is the ratio of kids that are not going?
We have about 75% that are going.
Awesome.
And as much as I wish it wasn't this way, I could have probably told you a few months ago, the younger the kid, the higher the percentage they're going. So I think it's going to be a great opportunity for those that are attending it. So, and I do think we've had some older kids that have had change of hearts because the deadline, the drop dead deadline has been today. I can't, I can no longer get ahold of Powder Ridge and say we're sending more kids. But with each day, I have had some students come in and say, I know the deadline is here, but I've really thought about it, and I do want to go. So it's been, it's been a positive thing, and honestly, it's been a great reinforcer. I had a conversation with a parent last Friday of a student who had struggled this fall. And I know that we had sent out criteria for the trip of attendance and kind of behavior referrals and detentions. Boy, this child had made some pretty large gains from September and October from when the news of this had come out the last six weeks. And I had called the mom just to let her know that things really have been improving, and we do notice them here at school, so.
That's great, that's really good. The school that I went to in St. Paul, we did a ski trip every year too, that we had to, you know, be able to be doing good enough at the school to go. So that's great, I'm glad it's still happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, I have a question on the Panthers After Dark and on the ECL program. What kind of numbers are you typically getting?
I'd like to tell you they're more than they are, but they're not. ECL is more attended than Panthers After Dark. ECL, I would say on a nightly basis, we have six or seven kids that attend. It truly depends on if they have tests coming up, if they have projects coming up. I know Kristin Dane works a specific night where she opens up her classroom, and kids that missed any food labs can come in and make up the food lab, so those nights are a little bit higher too. Panthers After Dark, we're usually looking at about one or two. And Panthers After Dark was created as a credit recovery program, but it's kind of morphed into credit recovery and homework help. And as much as I've told parents that have reached out, hey, my child's looking for help in this, this would be a great opportunity to get some very one-to-one interaction with a certified staff member to get your homework caught up, get any kind of remediation work that you may need. That one just has not been attended as much as it was last year. We will see, you know, we're starting to get to the point where, not that we haven't done credit checks with our seniors and grade checks with our seniors to this point, but I think for some of our seniors, graduation isn't real until you get closer. And when we start talking about your deficient credits, and you're not going to be able to walk across that stage unless you can make these things up. I do expect those numbers to go up a little bit as we get closer to May.
Any other questions? Now Superintendent Sanju?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things on my agenda here. Obviously, we have the MSB convention coming up here on Thursday and Friday, so let me know if you still have an opportunity to go, we can still sign you up. But we'll leave fairly early on Thursday morning, 7 o'clock, 7:15, but I'll connect with you guys that are going. Talking a little bit about the calendar. Want to announce, because of the January 4th day that we closed, we will be having school on February 20th as our approved contract, our calendar. So that day will be happening in February. So President's Day, there will be school happening. And we'll make sure that families know about that, and we'll continue to communicate that. An update on the bus garage, we do have a tentative agreement with a purchase agreement with RDV companies. On the sale of that bus garage, there's still a few little things that we need to work out with that, and that will be on the agenda for you guys to approve in February. So that's exciting news to have that happen. And then finally, we will be taking the next community schools meeting, will be on January 26th, and that's at noon. And that's going to be kind of our career conversation day, where we have McLeod for Tomorrow students that will be there along with probably 20 to 30 other adults, and we try to get about 50 juniors and seniors that come in for that day, and you just kind of rotate through, and you get about a five, six-minute conversation with people, and they get to tell their stories about their career. And it's a really exciting, fast-paced day, and that'll be happening on January 26th.
What the business that's looking at our bus garage is going to be moving? I mean, what are they going to be doing with the garage, do you know?
I think you talked a little bit about looking at storage units, those types of things, but.
Yeah, not for sure.
Not in all the details, yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Committee reports? None? Okay, approved consent agenda, enclosure number one. And I'll note that there is an addendum to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Clark, to approve the consent agenda and the addendum to the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Old business, no old business at this time. New business, action item number A, meeting time and place. The school board has traditionally met in a regular session on the second Monday of each month at 6:00 PM in the GSL Schools Community Room, room 443, 444. And if required, second meeting held on the fourth Monday of the month. Do I have a motion, and how would we like to?
I'll make the motion, sorry, John, we talked, I talked to Donna about this a little bit. The December meeting, we should look at getting that on the calendar at 5:00 PM right away.
Oh, yep.
And I talked to Tricia about it, because of the 6:00 PM has to be the truth and taxation per the state or whatever. So we should have that meeting at 5:00, and then everything else, I think, can go at the normal time. So I'll make a motion to have the meetings, as said, at 6:00 PM, except for the December meeting at 5:00 PM because of truth and taxation.
And do I have a second? Second by John. Okay. Motion made by Jason, second by John, to set the regular school board meetings on second Monday of each month, beginning at 6:00 PM, with the exception of the December meeting starting at 5:00. Meeting in the GSL School Community Room, room 443, 444, with the second Monday, with the second meeting, if necessary, to be held on the fourth Monday of the month. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Board per diem, the school board's current approved per diem rates are as follows. A, attendance at irregular and special formal board meetings, 2,600 per year. B, per committee meeting is $35, per negotiation meetings $50, an additional pay after three hours for committee and negotiation meetings, $35. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jason. Any questions or comments? Sorry, yep, motion, do we want to keep the same, increase?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Two years ago, I think, yeah.
I think it's been about four, yeah.
Four?
Yeah. Yep, so a motion by John and a second by Jason to set the per diem rates for 2023 as stated above. No changes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please, same sign. Motion carries. C, point board committees and representatives, enclosure number two. School board member Lindeman solicited board member preferences for community assignments. The committee and representative recommendations for 2023 are enclosed. I don't think there were, only one minor change in the committee lists. Otherwise, all committees remain the same for 2023. Do I have a motion? The change was the swap out for the certified staff, or?
Alicia's going to do certified staff.
I'll do certified staff, Jason removed himself.
I'll make a motion to adopt the committee assignments for 2023 as specified by the list that was sent out.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
I got a question.
Yep.
According to the draft, Jason, you were going to go to where?
I'm not taking a different spot, just you and Alicia was going to take my spot on certified staff.
Okay, any other questions? Motion by Clark and a second by Alicia to adopt the committee assignments for 2023 as specified on the enclosures list that was sent out. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item number D, payment of claims prior to board's approval and access to safety deposit box. Superintendent Sanju recommends that the school board authorizes business manager Sander to make payment prior to school board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next school, next board meeting without loss to the district of discount privileges, and further authorizes Sander to initiate and transact electronic transfers for the purpose of investing excess monies and for payment of bond principal and interest as provided by Minnesota Statute 123B.02 subdivision 18, and for the approval to have access to the bank's safe deposit box at Core Trust Bank. Approval is also given to the assistant business manager as the backup to Sander to delegate these duties in absence of Sander. Motion to, motion by Donna, do I have a second? Motion to, motion by Donna, do I have a second?
I'll second. Just, I have one question. The Assistant Business Manager is Tricia, correct? No?
Donna.
Donna, okay, Donna, okay, so, okay.
We left the name off just because she's gone.
Yep.
The title is still there, so we have to provide these minutes to the bank so they know who's who.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion made by Donna and a second by Jason to authorize Business Manager Sander to make payment prior to school board approval of claims that cannot be deferred until the next board meeting as listed above and access to the safe deposit box at Core Trust Bank. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item E, designate statutory duties for, of the clerk. It is the recommendation of Superintendent Sanju that the following statutory duties of the clerk be delegated to the administrative staff. The keeping of the book of minutes of all school board meetings, the preparation of reports that shall include the condition and value of school property, receipts and disbursements in detail and such other financial matters as may be called by the Minnesota Department of Education, the length of the school term and the enrollment and attendance by grades, and the names of the post office addresses of all directors and other officers and such other items of information as may be called for by the Commissioner of Education. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by clerk, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna. Motion by clerk and a second by Donna to delegate the statutory duties of the clerk to administrative staff as listed above. Do you have any questions or comments? Nope. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution directing Superintendent to make reductions, enclosure number three. If the school board plans to institute changes in the educational program of Glencoe Silver Lake School District 2859, the first step in the change process is the adoption of a resolution directing the school district's administration to make recommendations for the reductions in programs and positions and the reasons therefore. It is the recommendation of Superintendent that the school board adopt the resolution for the 2023, 2024 school year, school year. I'll take a motion.
Also move.
Motion by Jason, I'll take a second. I'll second. Motion by Jason, this will be held by a roll call vote. Motion by Jason and second by myself to adopt the enclosed resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons thereof for the 2023, 2024, 2024 school year. Donna, will you assist in taking the roll call vote?
Please designate for or against clerk.
For.
John.
For.
Jason.
For.
Alicia.
For.
And Donna, for. Jamie again is absent today.
Motion carries, four to zero, five to zero. Action, action item G, set and meet, set meet and confer date. Traditionally, the meet and confer meeting has been held early in February to prepare a recommendation for the school board about the upcoming school year's calendar. Superintendent Sanju recommends scheduling the meeting for a meeting on Wednesday, February 1st, 2023, at 3:00, 3:30 PM in the District Office Boardroom. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by John, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna. Motion made by John and a second by Donna to schedule the meet and confer meeting as requested. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item H, fundraiser requests, enclosure number four. The board approves requests to hold fundraisers at the June meeting and at the January meeting. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the fundraising request for the second half of the 2022, 2023 school year. Do I have a motion? I'll make, so, motion by John.
Sir.
Second by clerk. Any questions or comments? Motion by John and a second by clerk to approve the fundraising request as submitted. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item I, trip about, trip abroad. Jeff Iverson, high school choir teacher, requests approval for the students to participate in the Minnesota ambassadors of music trip, July 6th through the 20th, 2024, to six different countries in Europe. Students are nominated by their music teachers in this year's grades, eight through 11. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by John, do I have a second? I'll make that second. There, Mr. Iverson is here tonight. Any questions or comments for him before we proceed?
What, when will these announcements be made as far as who's picked to go or?
I have a meeting this Saturday, actually, so this is pretty timely with the other staff members in the planning process. They plan a trip in the spring and ask schools to host, not only our GSL students, but students in the area, since it's a statewide thing, so you may see Pachukis there or maybe whoever. And so, you know, I'm asking that the school can host that in the choir room. And that's how the nomination process kind of goes from there, so.
Okay. And there will be fundraisers involved with this if they choose to? Or is this all just, if you're elected to go, you?
Historically, we have had fundraisers. The students can do them on, by themselves. And as an example, one European student that went along once, got together with her grandma and they made pies at Thanksgiving and she sold probably like 300 pies. And then they froze them all and then sold them all and delivered them during Thanksgiving. So they can get creative with their own fundraising.
Okay. Otherwise, they'll get a, they'll get a list of what the costs are and they'll have to decide if they want.
Yeah, and I know the report I gave, you didn't have a price because of the switch, due to the going from one company to the next. I believe the last trip like this cost in 2019 was pretty close to 5,000 per student, but they'll hold me on that. So like I said, the company's changing and so I'll no price problem at that, but I certainly submit to Mr. Sanju.
Okay.
Mr. Iverson, I know that you have attended these in the past, just from our conversations. How many trips have you gone with the trip abroad program?
Sure, through Voyagers International, which is the company that used to do this before COVID. I was on seven European trips. And actually, I looked at the list of potential staff members. All, all the chaperones on this trip, by the way, are music teachers and their spouses from around Minnesota. And it looks like I'll be the senior member since I've done the most trips, so. But the trip was planned by a friend of mine, Jim Baxter, band director from Princeton. Very, he has a great reputation, great band program, so that's what I'm working with now.
And just for a legality comment for, for us, all trips abroad must be approved by the board, which is why it's in front of you today.
Even though the date is July, because we're not technically in school, it's, it's true, it's not technically through school, but it's kind of is.
Yep, and, and this is something that we work with our insurance company for. And they say to us that you need to make sure that all these trips, this is why when you have some of the, you know, the, is it EL? What's the?
EF.
EF, EF trips, those types of things that you've seen and, and that kind of stuff. They're usually done during the summer, they're usually done at a time away from school. And it's kind of a, a situation or an opportunity for students to be able to go, but it's, it's on their own. We sponsor, we support, but there's no funding that comes from the school district. But because of the insurance piece of it, they are asking us for having official approval from the school board and that's why Jeff's in front of us tonight. And you might see another one coming here, you know, in the next couple of months. You know, who knows where, where it's going to go. So families have those choices to, to take these opportunities and go from there. But why it's in front of you is because of, we need to have official approval.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, motion made by John, second by myself to approve the request from Jeff Iverson to allow students to participate in the Minnesota ambassadors of music trip. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item J, PSEO agreement with Alexandria Tech and Community College. Superintendent Sanju recommends approving the joint powers agreement with Alexandria Technical and Community College for the 2022, 2023 academic year. Is that the right years?
Correct, it's starting this, in a couple of weeks, so the correct year.
Yeah, it's, it, the school year is 22 to 23, but the opportunity for the student is just coming up here in the second semester, which is still the whole year.
Okay. This agreement allows eligible students to enroll in post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO courses. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jason, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna. Motion made by Jason, second by Donna to approve the joint powers agreement with Alexandria Technical and Community College in order to allow eligible students to enroll in post-secondary enrollment options, PSEO courses for the 2022, 2023 academic year. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Action carries. Action item K, second readings of policies. The following policies received their first reading at the December 14th school board meeting. It is the recommendation of the policy committee directors Lemke and Luckhart and superintendent of schools to adopt these policies. 210, conflict of interest, school board members. 304, superintendent contract duties and evaluations. 410, family and medical leave policy. 416, drug and alcohol testing. 417, chemical use and abuse. 418, drug-free workplace, drug-free school. 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. 521, student disability, disability and non-discrimination. 524, internet acceptable use and safety policy. 531, the pledge of allegiance. Do I have a motion? Motion by clerk, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jason, to adopt the policies as listed above. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item L, resolution to accept donations. It is the recommendation of Superintendent Sanju to adopt the resolution to, to accept donations. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jason, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Donna. As always, a great list of donations going to various things within our school district. So motion by Jason, a second by Donna to approve the resolution to adopt the donations. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item N, miscellaneous, none at this time. Adjournment, motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion by John and a second by clerk to adjourn tonight's meeting at 7:02 PM. Do we do, do we do approve?
I'll, I'll.
Yes, okay, all in favor, please indicate by saying.